And welcome everyone to the February, what is it, the 17th study session. And council member, council president will be a little tardy. So I'm gonna start us off with Kevin who's going to talk about the six-year street plan. I see Catherine Miller here as well. Are you gonna be the backup?
Yeah, we were hoping for a discussion today.
Great, and we've allowed 45 minutes for this. If you would choose to do it in less, I think a lot of us would be ecstatic about that because we're death by meetings, right? So why don't you go ahead and take it away? Thank you.
Perfect. So while Kevin's bringing up the slides, we just wanted to start the conversation with really questions for council. Do you want to go to your next couple of slides there, Kevin? We showed these information to you last time in terms of how projects come into fruition in terms of the processes. Some are data-driven, some are process-driven in terms of things like our matrix. And my hope is, council president made some statements at the last study session, just kind of how he was visualizing a process working in the future. And I was hoping we could start with council, if there's any questions you have on any of the different ways, whether a bridge project or a street capital project comes into the program, make a dialogue about what you see as, what you'd like to change, or how you'd like to proceed with any kind of future process.
Thank you. We, I can't see everyone, so council members, if you have questions, could you please jump in? Okay, it's crickets. I'll jump in. Catherine, we, prior to this, some years ago, the matrix was great as far as it went, but we went ahead and asked for other projects such as Freya to be on because we thought that by putting money into the Northeast PDA, it was for development. So is there some mechanism where we can still do that sort of thing?
Yes, so the Freya and Wellesley both went through, while it was a council process, it mimicked the same process we used for what we called the roadways of significance. And Kevin, why don't you go ahead and shoot down to those slides? So like we talked about, the matrix, we never expected to be perfect, and we wanted to make sure that there was a narrow path to pick outside of the matrix because without a narrow path, the matrix is kind of worthless, right? In terms of, the purpose of the matrix was to get a prioritization, the understanding that there are a lot of roads and a lot of interests, that everybody wants their project done first. But unless you have some kind of transparent place, a way to select projects where everyone understands, there's a fair process in place to utilize the selection through, it would be obviously kind of a meaningless process if you could just pick any time, anywhere outside of. And I'll go ahead and turn that over to you, Kevin.
Yeah, so Catherine's referring to this process that was, was discussed at length back around the same time as the matrix was sort of developed and implemented. I wasn't directly involved in those discussions, but my understanding is there was extensive discussion at the PCTS, Plan Commission, City Council. You know, ultimately, council didn't formally adopt that process, but around that time, council member Fagan, you know, came forward with a resolution regarding the projects you're referring to, council member Kinnear, the Freya and Wellesley projects. And then, you know, that was ultimately approved by council, those two projects and that resolution. So that's how those projects, you know, came into the program.
They were focused mainly on concept of economic development, and obviously, the PDAs are direct conversation around that topic in terms of it's an economic generator. And so that was that limiting or narrow factor that was put into the original conversation or concept.
Okay, could I build on that for just a second? So right now, we have Fifth Avenue in the East Central neighborhood that has undergone some study and is ripe for redevelopment. I know council member Wilkerson's been working on that. And so if we wanted to put that in, or how would this fit into what we currently have in terms of evaluating a, not a PDA, but an area of economic significance that could benefit by reconstruction of a road or improvement of a, of transportation facilities?
Sure, and let's talk a little bit about the Fifth Avenue in terms of, when you talk about what it needs, it sounds like it needs the, you know, potentially pedestrian lighting and other improvements along that business interface? Is that what you're referring to? Or are you talking about the road condition itself?
And council member Wilkerson, could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Thank you, Catherine. The road, yes, but the, how we develop it out, the street state and the light and the pedestrian piece of that, how to build on it. The road itself, actually, it's okay in comparison to other roads in the city, so I won't make any complaints. But how to develop that, that it attracts other economic development, since we know, I believe, that is the next growth spot in the city because of the land opportunity down there. And then how do we partner and try to get ahead of that if they're trying to come behind it and make up something, what's your plan for it?
And it sounds like exactly that was the intent of the roadways of significance. It wasn't just a matter of a narrow focus of the type like economics, but it also was expected to be a narrow focus of the amount. So, you know, some of the early discussions were, you know, each, each district gets to pick basically one that they want to put in through this, again, kind of side system that keeps the numbers focused and manageable. Kevin's got some information we can talk about a little bit later in terms of what's in the program today is obviously far more cost than we have money to fill it right now. So the point of an implementation document like the six-year street program is to implement, so it's not intended to be something we just kind of store projects because we've got so many, we can't actually get to them all. So in that kind of fabric, exactly what you're talking about, councilman Wilkerson, that economic focus and again, keeping the numbers manageable that we could actually affect change.
Go ahead, council member Wilkerson.
Thank you, council member Kinnear. And I just want to say, this process has been, you mentioned Fagan, it's like, okay, this has been going on for a long time, and I have to admit that it's a new, fairly new process, I think over the last few years. And I think with other council members, it's new because understanding how we get here, the planning, the funding, all that, because we have such tremendous, I won't call it pressure, but interest from our constituents throughout the city who are saying, well, why not here? Why not here? Why not here? We're having the growth, and I'll speak myself, I personally didn't have the knowledge to explain to them exactly why not here.
Right, and some of the other pieces, again, of that original concept was, the reason why Fifth Avenue isn't high on the list is frankly, as you pointed out, the road condition is a major factor, right? When we talk about rebuilding roads, that road condition is a major factor in the scoring. And so that's why obviously Fifth Avenue is lower on the list than other projects or other roadways that are in worst physical condition. And that's why that, that is the case for that one. When you, when we talked about originally, the roadways of significance, it was around, if you're gonna lift a project from the bottom of the list and effectively jump over projects that have scored high and theoretically should be the next ones on the list, some of that conversation is kind of highlighted and bold down there is, what would give is to, to not have a project get to go from the bottom of the list to the top and get everything at once. It was really to only focus on what the reason was. And the reason, for example, in the Freya area was for trucks. And so what actually got pulled forward for Freya was a rebuild of the road section itself, but not all of the side improvements like the sidewalks and drainage. The expectation was to lift that up to the top of the list, we're only gonna focus on what is the important driving factor for that economic purpose. And then, oh, as development came along, Freya, when it comes along Freya, the concept was those developments which are required to build the frontage road out in front of them would in fact come in and fill in the sidewalk and drainage as you'd go. So just sharing with council kind of the concepts and the conversation that happened before. And so for your example, council member Wilkerson, having that road coming in to the project through this roadways of significance being a very, again, one, one for that district effectively coming in and looking at that side area and not the road because it, A, doesn't need it in terms of the road condition, but the real purpose is what I'm hearing from you is that along the sides of that business interface between the curb and that building face and really improving that experience.
Anybody else? I can't see you. So councilor Stratton, or Zepone, or Calfcart, do you have any other comments before I ask another one? Okay, so Catherine or Kevin, we have the $4 million that Marlene Feist is proposing for areas that are, the roads need, they're really bad, but, and they're in areas that are commercially viable right now. How does that fit into this?
The, the commercial areas that Marlene is referring to is on local roads. Everything that Kevin and I are talking about today are on arterial streets, so that's the difference.
Yeah, and those would be part of the, they're on the maintenance side of the house, if you will, you know, the, just the standard kind of grind and overlay projects, really nothing else with them, that kind of live in that maintenance side on both arterials and local. And as Catherine's pointing out, these in particular are, are local streets that are part of what Marlene's been presenting on the business grind and overlay.
There was some question about that, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody was very clear on the difference and why it's necessary. If you've driven on those streets, it's clear to me, but not everybody has, so I just wanted to make sure we're all straightened away on that. Kevin, do you have more that you would like to share with us?
Before we hit roadway, just really quick, Kevin, I think it would be helpful also, last year, council president did ask us to go back and look at roadways of significance, and Kevin can talk a little bit about the conversations he's been having with the Transportation Subcommittee.
Yes, thank you. So I was gonna kind of go backwards here a little bit, we kind of jumped to the details, but we have been revisiting the topic. We've had discussions with the Planning Commission Transportation Subcommittee, several touches November, December, and, and earlier this month. It was sort of an open discussion, if you will, to, to look at and consider, are there other areas, are we still interested in the economic development focus as maybe one area or way the projects could come in under a roadways of significance? And were there other kind of special type projects? And through this discussion, kind of the second sort of category that's bubbling to the surface is just that equity focus. And also kind of concurrence that, yes, we're still very much interested in the original kind of roadways of significance discussion centered around economic development. You know, we're suggesting in terms of where we stand today, you know, kind of further exploration of kind of both of those categories, if you will, and we just talked about the economic development side. I think that's something that discussion can continue, and I think it's not formally in place. I think from a staff level, we, you know, suggest or hope that maybe it is formalized if, if there's interest in going that direction. On the equity side, where we kind of left things with the PCTS earlier this month, is that there's so much going on in the equity discussion right now at the federal and state level for transportation projects, that I think it makes, we believe it makes sense just to sort of pause and let those processes play out. And we're recommending that whatever we do in that realm of equity in terms of, you know, are we gonna, you know, pull a project or two forward in terms of prioritization under that equity justification, we want to be in alignment with what's gonna happen at the federal and state level and then through our MPO, SRTC. SRTC is in the process of, they already have a lot of equity data that they have available to us and use. They're in the process of updating that data over the next year, and they will be trying to align as best they can with the feds and the state. So we think it makes sense to just kind of let that process play out throughout this year and then revisit the discussion, most likely trying to do our best just to align with what SRTC does and what we're seeing at the state and federal level on that equity side. Again, as Catherine alluded to earlier, I think it's important that we sort of maintain some guardrails or some limits, if you will, in terms of, you know, a limited number of these special projects, you know, that we're gonna, that we would consider for bringing into the program. So any questions there? That's kind of where we stand overall on roadways of significance, and then just, like I said, the recent discussion with PCTS.
Go ahead, council member Calfcart.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, Kevin, I, thank you. I guess just in kind of response to the, the question, I mean, I think obviously, economic development is pretty crucial, and that's gotta be a top priority for us because if we can be, you know, focusing projects where we're actually gonna be able to generate jobs, especially good living wage, higher paying jobs, that's gonna be a boost for all communities across Spokane. So I think that that's pretty key. But what I'm wondering though, is can we think about the economic development potential but in a more equitable way? And so thinking about that, whether it's by district or neighborhood or census tract or something like that, but, but kind of that first priority is the economic development piece and then account for it within the, the kind of equity framework across the city.
Could you speak a little bit more about that, councilman Calfcart, in terms of how you bring those together, just to help us be on the same page?
Yeah, well, I think there's places across the city where there's a lot of economic development potential, and so it would really just be a case of, well, let's, let's think about this equitably, you know, where have we invested dollars, where haven't we invested dollars, going back, you know, 10 years, 20 years, 50 years, and, and make some equitable decisions in terms of where we're gonna prioritize the investments. But I think, you know, the focus can be the economic development benefits, but we can spread it out in an equitable way.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Yeah, I think there's some opportunity to do that. I think that, you know, the, the previous discussion has been more in a general sense. And I don't think we have, in this, you know, this specific realm of roadways of significance, I don't think we were ever anticipating to have, you know, sort of a score, if you will, it's gonna be a little more subjective scoring. So, so to your point, you know, maybe it, when we're considering economic development project, maybe we just sort of bring that, the company information, if you will, in terms of, you know, where, where does it sit, you know, from an equity lens. In terms of past investments, have to chew on that a little bit, in terms of how we pull that data together and, and what data we actually use. I think what initially comes to mind, the challenge there is the difference between, you know, public versus private investment, you know, sometimes areas would benefit greatly because of, you know, a private investment by developers that maybe spurred additional development, for instance. So I guess we have to have more, more discussion along those lines of, if we wanna look at the historical investment, you know, what, what data or information do we use?
I think we can get there, though.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you, Kevin. Now, it's gonna go down that road that maybe in the consideration or scoring that now be added to the mix. I think councilor Calfcart said it was a little tricky track there, it has not had development. Is it getting ready for development in some of those areas? Just some things that I think had not really been elevated as consideration and making those decisions. Economic development, yes, driving it. How it's going to be funded, yes, driving that. But if there's other opportunities for these things to be considered, should we make sure they're considered in decisions that are made?
Any other council questions before we go on?
Okay, so as, Kevin, go ahead and go to the matrix in terms of the projects picked or selected. We've talked a few times with council about the matrix and how it comes about, and when we're talking about, thank you, actually stop on that comp plan piece there, if you wouldn't mind, Kevin. We've said a few times that the, the projects are coming from the basis of our comprehensive plan. And so when we scored, it was truly coming out of and trying to reflect what we as a community have said in our comprehensive plan. So in effect, all of our prioritization in theory is in fact trying to accomplish our goals and our intent of, of the comp plan. And so when we have this roadways of significance or this outside selection, we're again kind of jumping over what, what we're trying to accomplish is a, is a, is a community goal, if you will. So that's why we keep talking about the roadways of significance really need to be very narrow paths and not very, very many getting through because you're effectively, again, kind of jumping over your own comprehensive plan goals. And if there are things that we're missing in our comprehensive plan, then really, please point them out and let's talk about what changes we want to do in the, in the comprehensive plan itself. So we are getting kind of that, that project in, in place that we're after. So with that, Kevin, go ahead and continue with where you're headed.
Don't go on yet. I have a question on enhanced public health and safety under bike safety, pedestrian priority, pedestrian safety, vehicle safety. We've seen an increase in accidents around pedestrian vehicles, and just recently, we've become more aware of how we should be constructing bicycle infrastructure to make it safer for people who use it and to encourage more people to use it. So could you talk a little bit about how we can really increase pedestrian safety and how we, along with that connectivity that we have with bike, because those, to me, those two things are really connected with connectivity and then the, the safety and ease of access for bikes and pets?
Well, I guess one way I'd answer that is that, you know, you, you've seen us come before you, talking about grant proposals, for instance. And I think, you know, without question, there's a greater and greater emphasis and focus in terms of where the money's actually flowing in our grant applications. And fortunately, we've been pretty successful in doing that. So I think we, I think we're attacking that pretty aggressively. We have ongoing applications right now, certainly with the SRTC call for projects. That is a, that is a unified call with different pots of money, but a few of the pots of money in that call are more bike and ped focused. So I think we're definitely, you know, aggressive in, in focusing on those issues. As it relates to the matrix, you know, as displayed here, it's certainly a factor in all of our prioritization. I guess one other point I would add, I don't want to get away from the bike ped topic, but just, you know, bike ped's an example, but also equity's an example in, in economic development or the importance of looking at the economic side of things is important. All those are already included in the matrix. It's just that the, the overall matrix is so diverse in all these different categories that are scoring that, you know, even if you have a project that's, you know, really important from an economic development or an equity lens or bike ped, it may not score as high as some other projects that kind of check the boxes in, in, in many of these categories. And that's kind of why you end up with kind of some of the scoring.
And you keep in, you keep in mind that the, the conversation we're having right now is around full rebuilds of roads, not necessarily the focus that you're seeing in this current conversation with Inga coming forward with the safety call that's going on, and we are focusing 100% on our bike and ped safety because those are data-driven conversations. And so that's, you know, it's kind of a separate and parallel focus for us.
And the other thing I'd add directly on bikes and peds is just the examples of the projects that we have going on right now that are active in terms of design or even starting construction. Riverside Downtown, the Illinois Avenue project that I presented to you in the fall that we're moving forward with this year. Those are projects, you know, where we're actively moving into doing things that are more aggressive and more robust in terms of accommodation of bikes and pedestrians, those higher level facilities, keeping safety in mind. And then even on our traditional, just kind of vanilla grind and overlays, you know, we're always looking for low hanging fruit opportunities. So we did that with a post-street that just had the chip seal done this past year, you know. When, when we did the chip seal, we also restripped it to eliminate the center turn lane to allow room for striping bike lanes through there, for instance. So I don't know if that answers your question entirely, but I think that's just those are examples.
I think, you know, we've gone so long with not addressing those issues that now there's a little bit of catch-up to play. And for example, Riverside, when I saw those, that design, I thought, this is, this is nice. So I'm glad that we're going forward with some of these things because it's, it's important to people, and it's especially important to the people who are coming up. I mean, we're, we're aging out, but the people who are coming up, and the people moving here, those, those sorts of things are important. So thank you.
Okay. Well, just continuing along on the, kind of the rebuild matrix and that scoring process, kind of, kind of reiterating that and how we arrive at the, at the list that we have that we're kind of working from today. Again, I summarized before, and Catherine alluded to it, you know, how we have these scoring categories and the major categories where all the categories align with our comprehensive plan. This was, I don't, again, I don't expect you to read this, this is the actual scoring sheet. I sent that out earlier in case there's an interest in sort of diving into the details of how different projects are scored. But when you do that and you look closer, you could kind of see where there's certain projects, certain types of projects are then naturally gonna score better. And it tends to be the downtown projects that kind of check all the boxes of it's on a transit route, it's a high activity center, it's, you know, it's a critical business center, you know, it, it checks so many boxes that that's why they score better. And then I can dive into some of the details of the projects. I, last time I had shared, and I have it up as well, which I can pull over here. One second.
I just had a quick question about a matrix.
Sure.
The grade categories are the points that they get, is that one through five for everything, and are they all weighted equally?
There's, there's some different weighting. There's some different weighting for each of them. In general, they tend to be balanced, but in some cases, each of the major categories, the six major categories, they all add up to 10 points. So when there's different numbers of subcategories, often, obviously, you kind of have to divide up, you know, divide up or divvy up those points a little bit differently. If you want to wade into kind of that, that detail, I can provide kind of, there's a, some background documents as well in terms of, you know, the details of how, how stuff is scored or weighted and the ranges. There's kind of a range for each, each of these things that, they're generally broken down into kind of one to five point range for each of them, but there's some slight differences in each other. But I can provide some of that backup. I was trying to keep this concise as I could because it's obviously a lot to digest as is.
Is a, is a high clip? Is a high clip comment, though. The purpose of the matrix is to rebuild roads, which are our most expensive cost when we talk about road improvements. And so, our focus obviously is if we've got a road that has bike and ped needs that needs to be rebuilt versus a road that doesn't have any bike and ped pieces, we scored it that you pick the road that has the other facilities first before we go to the one that doesn't, if that makes sense. And so, that's kind of in the background, how that scoring is helping push to the top or a little bit higher in the scoring, those roadways that have the most facilities in terms of trying to service the most users.
Thank you. So, I had shared this last time. This little bit cleaner, simpler table is really just an excerpt of that same data and that larger spreadsheet I sent you. This was, yeah, prepared this in a little bit different way to kind of highlight the projects that are already in our program versus the ones that aren't, don't have all the detail of the subcategory scoring and such, but provided some of the basic information. And it kind of helps you get a snapshot and point to the fact that it wasn't necessarily an absolute, it was never intended to be, where we say, hey, we're only going to put the top 10 projects in or top 80. It's meant as a guide, it meant as, you know, additional information to kind of help make that decision. So, when the projects that are in there now were chosen, when this initial matrix was developed, I think it was for the 2018 program, there were, you know, discreet or definitive decisions made at that time. And one of the reasons you see projects, and Catherine, I think, highlighted this at our last study session, one of the reasons we sort of skipped over some and continued down was you'll notice that the ones that are in gray, the ones that aren't in our program today, they're mostly downtown projects as well. And so, it's those high-ranking jobs. We don't want to, you know, completely blow up downtown all at one time. So, there's that recognition that what we need to limit the total number of projects because of the impact the construction creates downtown and also to, you know, sort of spread out amongst, around the city, if you will, and be able to reach out to some projects that maybe aren't in the pure downtown core. And then there's, Catherine.
Oh, I'd say that was the conversation from your subcommittee, the transportation subcommittee. That was their recommendation. Everything Kevin pointed out was really their driving recommendation.
Yeah. And then in it, you know, we recognize the matrix is not perfect. I kind of tried to highlight, it's not all inclusive, but just some general comments of things that were part of the conversation and discussion and maybe why certain projects were selected. You know, as they're dipping down and kind of skipping over some of those downtown projects in order to sort of branch out, if you will, you start getting to some North Bank projects. You get some projects that are very much utility-driven, that have some important utility needs. You get some other economic, like Bloomsday and the county public safety complex, you know, being priorities for Broadway Avenue, there were considerations. So, there were these other, maybe more subjective things that were brought into the discussion, if you will. But big picture out of the total list, you know, you'll see that the bulk of the projects that are in our program today are from that upper third, upper quartile of the overall list. And some of those exceptions are the ones that were brought in the program by resolution that we talked about earlier, such as Wellesley and such as Freya and NEPD. But otherwise, they're, you know, bulk of the projects are, again, are in this sort of upper portion of our ranked list.
Counsel, any questions? Okay.
So, that was primarily what we had today. I've already kind of gone over the roadways of significance. Just, I guess, final overview for honor of the questions, just to give you the high-clip view of kind of schedule and where we're going. You know, we, as most of you know that have been around, we have a pretty robust process in terms of the number of touchpoints with the PCTS, Plan Commission, those are all listed here. We may also have some more informal presentations to the DAB, which I did last year as well, and maybe the Community Assembly as well. So, there'll be further meetings, again, with PCTS, where our workshops, where we look at the actual changes to the program and our compliance with the comprehensive plan, ultimately leading to presenting the draft program at PIES and City Council meetings and hearings in June for adoption. Again, as the reminder that we have to have an adopted program prior to July 1st each year to be in line with state law and requirements. So, Catherine, do you have anything else to add?
You know, I would like to go back, if anyone has a question about our scheduling in terms of the timing and our requirements to meet it. You know, you showed the slide, Kevin, that we're not recommending any new program, our projects from a matrix perspective. I thought maybe you could spend a little time and show some images why we're making that recommendation.
Sure. And I kind of developed, it's very simple graphic, but it's just try to kind of tell the story of, you know, we have this lengthy list of rebuild projects. And as you all can understand, those also happen to be our most expensive projects that we can build, much more expensive than, say, a grind and overlay or a restriking project for bike lanes or any of those less expensive projects.
They're currently in our program today.
Yeah. So, we have this huge universe of projects that we need to construct. And then even from that large list, there's only a, you know, certain amount that are in our program today, and that kind of is the yellow bubble, if you will, here. But even within that, when those decisions that I talked about earlier, about looking over the matrix and the selection process of the PCTS and what projects went in, there's a recognition that we're going to be overprogrammed, ambitious, if you will, in terms of the number of projects we can complete. There's a variety of reasons for that. Strategically, it's good to have more there for potential grant opportunities that could come down. But the actual, versus the available actual money, we have more projects in the program, in the six-year program today than based on our kind of typical or normal available funding through our local funding sources, but more importantly, through grant sources. You know, realistically, we won't be able to deliver all those projects in that six-year program unless we have a, you know, much better than anticipated success in, you know, upcoming grant applications. So, we just wanted to touch on that, you know, in terms of the six-year program is sort of overprogrammed as it is, and that's one reason why we're not recommending any new additions from the matrix for this year. It's possible that may change at this time next year when we're updating the program. As we've been talking about, we had a large call for projects with SRTC. We'll see where things land with that in terms of outcomes. That may lead to maybe some staff recommendations for some, you know, changes next year, for instance.
Just some takeaway points. The projects that we are going through the call with SRTC, when we talk about the rebuild projects, they are sitting in the six-year program now. They've been in there for a while, waiting for that opportunity. So, the projects Kevin's bringing forward, and we're actually going to be coming back to PIES to talk about just that call. This is the background of understanding why we're bringing certain projects forward, and they are coming from the six-year program for rebuilds. And you understand now the process, how they even got into the program. And the other takeaway is if council does like, would like to put into place that roadways of significance process, what we will be recommending is to look into the existing six-year program and the projects that are in there today and make recommendations of removing those projects for a roadway of significance. Because as you can see from the bubble here, the blue is what we can historically afford in terms of what's coming in for grants. The yellow is what we have in the program, much more projects than we can afford. And the green is the matrix, basically, in terms of what can come out of the matrix for selection. And so, definitely want to engage in the future with council to start understanding how you'd like to proceed with roadways of significance and then start a dialogue of what you're thinking about to put in so we can understand what we can move out to, again, not have a program that is unrealistic, that we can't get to. Because I don't want to frustrate anyone that we have something, you know, languishing in the program that we can't get to.
I think Councilmember Cathcart and Stratton have questions there that I see.
Okay. Councilmember Cathcart, then Stratton.
Just, yeah, just real quick, I'm wondering, do we know kind of what the estimated total cost is of all of our rebuild projects that need to be done? Is there kind of an estimated amount that that would be if we had that amount, we could get it all done?
You saw that slide, Kevin.
I don't have that slide in here. I mean, I've done some back-of-the-nap in Calx, you know, in excess of 300 million, is what I would say.
Okay. And then are there any, I assume there's no residential streets that are included in this, but do we have residential streets that will at some point require a full rebuild?
You know, that's a discussion in its own right, frankly. We've done it over the years. I'm aware we've done, occasionally done a residential rebuild. It's not very common. I think that's definitely another, frankly, area of a hole, if you will, or shortfall. You know, we have the TBD program, that's funding some grind and overlays, but I think, Councilman Keneer kind of alluded to this, we're sort of in such a hole, the TBD is relatively new thing, there's so much catching up to do. I think there's a need for that, but the funding is just very limited.
But also, do you keep in mind the use of a local road is much less than an arterial? So, you actually have a road that can withstand decades over an arterial.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if there's a few out there that probably are getting to that point where they will, they will need a full rebuild. But I think that residential piece, I know that's not what we're talking about, but that is one of those big gaps that I think if we could find a solution, some sort of program that could get those touched, you know, a certain percentage each year, that would be a big improvement. But thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Yeah. One of our challenges on that funding side, too, there's probably some exceptions out there, but generally, the grant programs available to us, you know, they're not allowed, you know. And you generally have to have an arterial roadway. And even within arterials, there's a strong preference for the principal arterials. So, you're talking those, you know, kind of that hierarchy of streets. Again, they're usually not even eligible, or if they are, they're not going to score well. So, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Stratton, do you want to go ahead?
Yep. I don't know where this fits, but I've promised myself that I'm not going to forget to bring it up. I have old, or some notes from Councilmember Mum regarding Strong Road. What she is saying is that we were able to get it on the six-year plan, but there, what I'm trying to figure out is she said they were working on some funding from SRTC. Does anybody have an update or any knowledge of that at all?
I don't have any knowledge from a past SRTC action. It is in the program, but do keep in mind that the process, as we've described, that that project did not go through.
Right. But the problem is we're getting, I get so many calls on it from residents in that area. I think that she was trying to kind of hustle up something so we could at least move it up a little bit. I don't know. But, okay, I'll keep it on my list of things to keep yipping about.
Let's talk about that offline, Councilmember Stratton, because we should probably meet with Councilmember Wilkerson and Sapon, who are on SRTC, and just dig into that a little bit.
Yeah.
I think it's worth noting, too, that how complicated this is in terms of how many streets actually need help and how much money we actually have. And when we try and explain it to constituents, it's difficult. And so, you know...
It's hard when you say, we got it on the six-year plan, and then you say, well, but it didn't score enough to, you know, get work done on it. And somewhere, it might be wise to talk about how we present that to the neighborhoods so they understand it better, too.
Yeah. Yes. And it's complicated. And it took me, you know, months to wrap my head around when we first came up with this matrix, kind of a little bit of a head-scratcher at first, and then gradually, as you understand it, you realize it makes sense. But to explain it, then to have to re-explain it to somebody, yeah, you almost need Catherine or Evan, or Kevin there.
Yeah. And I'm worried, I'm worried because some of those that live up there believe that it has funding to go through. So, that's what I'm trying to save, save myself on.
Yeah. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah. I guess, I think that's a great, a really good point, is that it is kind of misleading when we say it's the six-year street plan. And I think a lot of people just assume, okay, well, within six years, this project is going to get completed. So, obviously, that's the formal name, but maybe we just want to think about rebranding the, you know, that program in terms of just the public description of it so that people don't have a misleading perception of what's going to happen.
Right. And to speak really quickly to Strong Road, it is not a principal arterial. It's a very low count. We've talked about that, obviously, with our previous emails and conversation and our concern about that particular road going in. It has struggles about, you know, it's not our choice. It's a competitive, you know, it's a competitive process with outside agency funding, state and federal funding. And, you know, we certainly will pursue when it's coming into the time. We've got projects that are already in the queue ahead of it in terms of addressing those as we go through, but it is in the program. And my concern is because of the low ETE, it'll be a frustrating process for some.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, I want to take...
I've got a quick question.
Go ahead.
Well, I was actually just trying to clarify to make sure I'm understanding things correctly. So, my understanding is the matrix is the green, citywide rebuild projects. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then you pull from that to the yellow, to the six-year plan?
Yeah.
Based on potential citywide significance projects or making sure they're not all centered? Kind of that process that you were just talking about?
The scoring, yes.
And then we pull projects when they come available funding, depending on grants available or priorities from that?
Correct.
Okay. I wanted to make sure I was getting that plane catch-up, so, thank you.
Anybody who has questions, both Catherine and Kevin are accessible and Sam's speaking for you, and would be willing to help us understand this more because, as I said, it is complicated. So, thank you both for being here. And we'll move on to our next topic, which is going to discuss, this is for us, council members, because of all of the conversation that's been going on in our community around homeless issues and what is council doing, what is the mayor doing, what is the business community doing? And Councilmember Stratton and I have met with numerous business owners and providers, as have Councilmember Wilkerson and I. I had Jacobi come up with a list of things that the council has done. If you haven't had time to review that, don't worry about that too much. Just know that it's an extensive list. And then Scotty Mickle from Councilmember Stratton's office helped compile more of that. So, we have quite an extensive list. So, at this point, we know what council has done, and I would like to engage you all in a conversation about what's next? What are we missing? What have we not done as a council that we are empowered to do? What should we be asking the business community to do? What should we be asking the administration? And finally, what should we be asking the faith community to do? Because it's going to take all of us to make a dent in this problem and to actually move forward so that we're seeing some successes. Right now, I don't feel like we're seeing a lot of success. And I know they're out there, I just don't feel it. I don't feel that there's some tangible things that we can point to and say, look here, this is a success. And I might just be so jaded at this point that I'm not seeing it. So, I would invite you to chime in, please, and let's talk about how we can get moving on some other things. So, go ahead, Karen.
I just wanted to add, and Lori, I did send that to you. Probably a couple months ago, I was invited by Chris Patterson to have a meal, and Jonathan Bingle was with me as well, with the Washington Mutual, or the Washington Trust Group that is working with businesses to come up with some ideas and some funding. They sent an email to me, and Lori's going to send it to everybody, that kind of gives an overview of what they're doing. But I really encourage them to, every time they meet, to invite one council member so that we can stay in touch and connect with, you know, that group, just to stay on top of what they're doing and what we might be able to do to partner with them. So, Lori will be sending that out, you can take a look at it. But they've been meeting and talking, but I don't know. I didn't look at the email really clearly because we were going to meetings. So, it's information worth looking at because I think they're really trying to get something done.
I think so. Councilmember Bingle?
Hey, I know that we have, you know, partners with, you know, construction companies and things like that, where, you know, people who go through, you know, a process in some of the homeless programs, that they can get, they can get... of the homeless programs, that they can get, they can get jobs there. We have good partnerships with that. Is there any way we could do something more with employers to incentivize hiring people who are experiencing homelessness?
That is a good point. I'm glad you touched on that, because Karen and I used to go to, what was it called, Karen, the, the construction, remember the apprenticeship graduation?
Yeah, the Head Start, and now we have PIP with Judith Gilmore. And we have two groups.
Two groups.
And we are getting information out to folks, so they know. Lori, why don't you and I talk to Judith, because we just got an email from her on their first graduation.
And so essentially, what it was, was people coming out of Geiger and going through these apprenticeship programs, and then, they're pre-apprentice. So how to fill out a resume, how to interview, and, you know, just, this is a hammer, this is a screwdriver, real basic stuff. But it, it set them on a path that empowered them to continue on to a further apprentice program. And it kind of opened up some avenues. Well, I'd like to go be an electrician, or I'd like to go be a plumber, whatever it was. It piqued their interest so that they could start thinking about next steps coming out of prison, which was really valuable, and it had a high success rate. So, in, so along that line, I think what you're saying is the next step is, how do we engage employers in our city to reach out to groups and say, "I would like to employ somebody who is currently homeless?" And I think that we could engage and perhaps find out how to do that. And I think it's going to take us a little bit more time to figure that out, but I like that idea. It's, because it's, it's also something we could do upstream before people become homeless.
And the one thing I would add is that Dawn Carver, over at the Resource Center, she works really closely, not only doing the resource piece, but she works really closely work with, work for, what is it, work?
Worksource.
Worksource.
Yeah.
Because they're all in the same building. And so that might be, I'll put her on my list of maybe somebody we can reach out to, to see if she can't share that information with Worksource, if they haven't already gotten it.
That's a great idea. Especially for kids coming out of high school without any job skills, or coming out of, of foster care. And maybe they graduated, maybe they didn't. But they need a way to make a living, so they're not on the street. Councilmembers Sapon?
Yeah, I think that's a, a great idea. And yesterday, I was at the Visit Spokane Board Meeting, and the mayor talked about even the city being an employer, and how we can incentivize people there with more cleanup crews and people that we're trying to hire. I don't know if that's a thing that we need to talk about, like, how could we as an employer do our part in providing that job training and recruitment? I also went to the Continuum of Care Board Meeting Retreat on Monday, and so I was going to report out a couple things there that they were talking about. Ben Sucker talked a lot about how we have ten different funding sources that have different requirements that create a disjointed plan, and that we really, as a region, need to come together to have a goal and consolidate resources to create that plan. And that was kind of what they were beginning the conversation on there, and they'll be moving towards. But it would probably require each jurisdiction to give up some control on that, to try to coordinate resources. And so I'd say that was the big thing. And they're in talks with a lot of the Washington Trusts and all the different groups too. So, it's just something that we might have to be prepared for as a group too.
That's, that's great. Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you. And, and Councilwoman Sapon, I was listening to the Housing Action Planning Committee this morning, and that very thing bubbles up. So, one thing that has challenged me is that we look at this as just one big problem, when there's definitely different pieces of it. The ones who are very difficult to house, the ones who are, who are working for, would love a house, or, or a place to live, we've got the whole family situation, and we've got the youth. But I have a thing where we've kind of separated that, because I think they all need a different approach as to how to solve them, instead of one big rush that we just take the homeless. And, and there's lots more pieces to that. I, as a councilor, how we could look is, we really don't have one point person or one point entity that's really trying to help coordinate all these different groups that are meeting, whether it's business, or whether it'll be faith community. How and where do they go? Who will hold that work to kind of help move that along? So maybe if we identify, and it may be the business community, that would be great, someone where that is their whole focus, is how to coordinate these different entities for the outcomes that we want.
I, I concur. Do you have more, Councilmember?
No, I'm trying to lower my hand. There we go.
But I'd like seeing that hand waving. The other piece too, for me, is we're, as you said, we're lumping everybody into one big category. They're homeless. And then we're conflating homelessness with criminality. And so when we hear from the business community, they want to solve homelessness, but then they talk about drug addiction and mental illness. Those are two separate things. It so happens that maybe drug addicted and homeless, you could be drug addicted in your house too. You could also have mental illness and be housed. But it so happens, we're seeing people act out on the street because they're homeless. And I think we really have to separate those three things and treat them individually. So if you are able to successfully live by yourself, or live in a group, then that's great. But if you need services, then those services need to be provided, because putting people in housing without those services is a recipe for failure. And so I'd like to see us really lean in on that a little bit, and create a dialogue that doesn't conflate all those groups, so that we're really talking about different things, and how to solve those in different ways. Go ahead.
Hey, Councilmember, Councilmember Stratton, they are looking at the legal ease of void to be martin, and so trying to do another look or interpretation and bring forth policies to the city. And I think that's a great idea. Not saying that we have all of the great policy ideas, but once again, I would ask that they invite us in because just to show up with something, and they've done a lot of work, and then like it's a non-starter. And so I wouldn't want that to happen either going forward. So it's that partnership with this legal piece around void to be martin seems to be how we interpret the city, and how the business community interprets that. I think it's a challenge, along with the continuing low barrier beds that are available in the community, what, what that looks like, how we go forward with that.
Councilmember Kaffart?
Yeah, thank you. I guess there's a couple things I think we need to be thinking about. One, and I'm going to try to go out for a visit next week, but hearing from the administration, some concerns around the, the Cannon Shelter, not so much the operations or anything.
You're breaking up. He's lost you.
And, and themselves. It's kind of...
There you go.
And, can you, can you guys hear me now?
We can hear you, but we can't see you. So that's okay. Maybe turn off your video, and then we can hear what you're having to say.
Yeah. Oh, wait, oh, wait. So just that it's turning into a kind of a warehouse situation, where a lot of folks are staying there, but, but they're not, you know, taking the next steps in, in their life, and, and kind of helping them move along in the process of getting out of homelessness. And since this is a city-owned, city-run, city-sanctioned shelter, I think we should be doing a lot more prioritizing, trying to move people out of homelessness, rather than just keeping them in place, which frankly, doesn't do them, or, or anybody else in the community any good. And I don't think that's an issue with the, the operator, or, or anything like that. I think it's just something we need to think about from a, from an operations point as a city, and as a policy focus of the city, how we're going to try to encourage folks to actually improve their lives and, and move along, and, and not make these almost permanent housing situations. Along with that, I think we need to re, go back and, and rediscover the idea of good neighbor agreements. If we're going to be standing up another shelter, that's got to be a, a critical piece, because we want to make sure that the neighborhood is protected, the community is protected, and that folks have an understanding of what, what the expectations are, and, and know that, that the impacts are going to be minimal. The last thing is enforcement on some of this stuff, especially where there is a lot of criminality. And I will just use the East Central Illegal Camp as a great example. There have been over three hundred and sixty calls for police service. Three hundred and sixty. How much resources are we spending as a city just on the police response? Not to mention the actual impacts to the neighbors who are getting vandalized, graffitied, cars lit on fire, et cetera. So we need to do a much better job of preventing, stopping, policing, when there is a robust amount of criminality that's coming from, you know, a camp, a site, a nuisance property. It doesn't have to be homelessness either. There's a lot of folks that are causing these sorts of impacts, and we need to just do a better job of, of responding and keeping the community safe.
Those are great points. Councilmember Stratton?
So, thank you, Councilmember Kaffart. I totally agree. I have been over to the Cannon Shelter a few times. There's nothing for people to do. They go in and they lay on those beds, and some of them are afraid to even leave, because if they leave, they may not be able to come back in and get their bed, if they're late checking in. I don't understand why we as a city can't look at even contracting a couple programs, where we could contact maybe the community college, colleges, and to go out and do some surveying of what people, what kind of training, or what kind of information we could bring to people on job opportunities, or something to get them. Because if all we're providing is just that place to sleep, they're still not human. They're still not being treated as human beings. They're, they're still not being treated as people that could have opportunities. And I, I would love to work on that, if, if the, if somebody's willing to take up the, you know, take it up and see what we can do. But we should not just be letting people sleep in beds and do nothing, because I've been over there a couple times, and I've met some really great folks that are articulate, and were easy to talk to. And I thought, what is the next step for these people? What can we bring here that will entice them, or kind of get them excited about something? And we need to be doing that. So I appreciate that, and I'll support any efforts we do in that area.
So before I go to Councilmember Wilkerson, just kind of a straw poll, how do, what are we thinking about a good neighbor agreement as a group? Are, are we largely in support of that? Because, yeah. So, I, I don't see...
Sorry, can I?
...anybody here going, "No." So, okay. And go ahead.
You just got to work out the details.
Yeah. Yeah, let's just, let's do it. Let's get it done.
So, I like the idea of the good neighbor agreement, so long as the agreements are things that we'd be willing to do citywide, and not just for, you know, these organizations. Because, you know, looking through some of them, and, you know, providing extra liability for things that are happening blocks away from them, isn't something that should necessarily, I think, be in there. But I think the good neighbor agreement, so long as they're something that are reasonable for, for these organizations, I'm, I'm in.
And what about starting out small, and then see how it works, and then get it a little bit wider application?
Yeah. And some of the, some of the laws that are already on the books might just be the good thing to start with in these good neighbor agreements, where it just sort of compiles, this is what we expect of, of everybody already, and not just these organizations. But then it, it not only reinforces, you know, where the city stands in making sure that these things are done, but then is a good public perception of, you know, what we're trying to do.
I actually see this as something we could involve the COPS program in, when you think about what they all do, and, and the, what's this that program they do, you know, the block watch. So, kind of incorporate it into a block, block watch. So, go ahead, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. The good neighbor agreement's a great place to start. Government was never designed to do social service programs, because I don't think that's what it was designed to do. We were fire, police, streets and roads. So, we don't have the people here to do the work. I agree, Councilmember Stratton. We should be helping our nonprofits deal capacity. And what that is, we as a team do not provide a steady funding stream for them. So the money they've been getting, or historically they've been getting, is all pass-through money. It's never money that was invested by the city until COVID came along. So how they expand capacity, because they're always in this cycle of just trying to keep the programs running that they have, and not the ability to grow them, because the ones we have work at work. But they can only do so much. And when we invest in people to try to change their lives, that is not cheap work. And it is a long-term, not a intervention, and then you're gone. So, again, I think we need to have those providers at the table. I know we've all talked to them individually in small groups, but really, have we asked them how to help solve this problem? I don't know if the, actually, if the council and administration had that conversation, and what it would take.
You and I've had that conversation before many times, about government should do it, government does best. I absolutely agree. I think we're in uncharted waters right now. And we've never had to do this before. And so now we're kind of scrambling, trying to figure it out, and then compounding things, is, you know, COVID. So, this is, this is not an easy fix. Anybody else want to chime in here? Go ahead.
Yeah. To us and to the community, thank you, Councilmember Pinnier, for if you haven't read, the whole list of resolutions and ordinances that we have put forward to try to address these challenges. The first one I started with back in 2018, with Councilmember Fagan, doing a resolution for a regional approach. So this has not just happened in the last two years. And you and your businesses say, "This has been going on for years." I think COVID just really exacerbated that. So from a policy and funding position, I think we have stepped up at this point in time. So it really is bigger than us on council, how to move this needle.
Councilmember Stratton?
And I will add to that, that I have several times, because we've seen the problem growing and growing, I have said several times, and I've shared it with the administration, we are not inviting the right people around the table to help us with this. We have organizations, we have hospitals, we have healthcare programs and resources that we should be sitting around the table with, saying, "What can you do? What can you do? How can we use you? How can you work together?" And to my, to my knowledge, we've not done that. And I've tried not to go out and do that on my own, because I, that would be disrespectful. But I really think at some point, we need to start contacting those colleges and universities, some of the hospital programs. A long time ago, I met with the MultiCare, and they wanted to provide, what they thought they could do best in the community was mental health services. And they were kind of thinking ways, as they were settling in Spokane, how to do that, and how to get into neighborhoods, and that kind of thing. And passed that information forward, that was probably four years ago, and I don't think anybody ever contacted them. So there's a lot of missed opportunities there that I think we really need to keep thinking about, and keep trying to connect, because we're not going to solve this alone. And, and we need, we need those entities to help us.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bingle, and then Kaffart.
Well, I know that, you know, our office, you know, we, we just went and, you know, toured the Salvation Army facility, which I know Councilman Sapon has done, and many others have, have done. We went on a ride along with Jules, Helping Hands, and she took us to a lot of different encampments, and showed us, you know, these are the different groups of homeless, and where they're camping, and things like that. These are families over here. These are where we might have some more troubled folks, doing all those kinds of things. I have no problem being a person who, like, sends out our schedule, because we're trying to meet with all these different people. As, you know, Councilmember Stratton and I, we had that meeting with Chris Patterson and their, you know, association, which is now called Hello for Good, which I think is a great organization, what they're doing. If, if we are looking for a point person, I, I would happily take point on this, and you can send me your questions. We can email our, our schedule, these are the individuals we're meeting with. We can email our, our schedule of these are the individuals we're meeting with, the questions you'd like answered, and we can, we can bring them back to council because I know that it is tough to get us all in one position, the legality of everything. But if, if we're looking for somebody, I, I could even tag team it with somebody if they wanted to, to tag team, but, you know, this is a, a major focus of ours.
Go ahead, Councilmember Cathcart, then Wilkerson.
Yeah, just one, one other piece I think that, that hasn't been mentioned, but from the regional perspective on this issue, which, which certainly I think we all agree that there is some or, or a lot of regionality to it. We should be, and I've said this before, but we should be meeting quarterly or bi, biannually with our county commissioners, with the Valley Councilmembers, the Airway Heights Councilmembers, Liberty Lake Councilmembers. We should have joint meetings with all of them on the books multiple times a year, if not all of them at the same time, to talk about kind of from a regional perspective and allow the public to, to see the conversations from a regional perspective of how we can better collaborate on some of these things. Since I've been here two, two years and a couple of months, there hasn't been any joint meetings with other jurisdictions, which I think would be super helpful on this, but also a lot of other issues that we all need to be talking about together as well.
I think the mayor has, but we have not been included in that. And I think to your point, it would be nice if one more, three councilmembers joined that. And if it was three, then we could perhaps do it a little bit more nimbly. So go ahead, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. I was going to support Councilman Bingo on taking that on, but I would encourage you and us if we find a convener, whether it's a foundation or the hospitals, we can actually convene these groups who have a vested interest outside of the political arena. We have to be a part, but I don't know if we're the ones to be convening these conversations to make the changes in our community.
I think that's a, that's a great point. And I mean, I, I would welcome everybody's input on this organization, the Hello for Good that has been championed by Washington Trust and the Chris Pattersons. And if that's somebody that we would be comfortable with, again, you know, sort of leading this regional effort, like to Councilman Kinnear's point, I would happily be one of one, two or three to be, to be here because I, I, what I, what I have heard and continue to hear from everybody, I think we're all very motivated in many similar ways to, to see some, some, some progress in this area and so.
Go ahead, Councilmember Stratton.
So I just got a text from somebody who is watching our meeting and a suggestion. And she says regarding the homeless discussion, some years ago, the Goodwill, which I remember this, they had a, like a day labor where you could go work program.
We visited them.
Where they drove around and picked people up to see if they wanted to make money.
Yeah.
I don't know, are they still, are we still working with them or are they still doing it?
No. And that created, it was, it was successful and it wasn't. So some of the folks that they were picking up to do work, there were some physical limitations on those folks. So they couldn't work an eight-hour day. They could work maybe three or four. And the funding ran out. It wasn't as successful as we thought it would be. So the funding just kind of dried up. We also have the program to help people get their social security disability because a lot of these folks actually have money coming to them.
I remember that.
To apply for that was onerous. And Goodwill was doing that as well. So, and, and we were funding that. So I'm, and I'm not sure if they still are able to do that. Go ahead, Mr. Cathcart.
Yeah, I, I'm wondering, was there a, was there a, somebody full-time running that program that, that went out and picked people up and put them to work?
Yes.
Because I feel like.
And the van, yeah.
Yeah, I, I recall the van. I, I recall a couple of news stories before it launched, but then it kind of went quiet and it didn't really, at least out in the public, there just wasn't as much conversation around it. And I wonder if to a certain extent, maybe that was a little bit of the problem is it just wasn't as well advertised as, as it probably could have been, but.
And I don't disagree. That is very possible. We were counting on Goodwill to push that forward, take the lead and really make it a go. But there were some limitations. And they weren't paying people. They were giving out gift certificates. So for gift certificates at a restaurant or for clothing or whatever else. Council President has joined us. Do you want to chime in here?
Yeah, I was just going to talk about that. Thanks, everyone. Sorry I'm late. I was testifying at the legislature for us. So that, one of the challenges, that program originally, we thought it was going to be actually a job program for people, but it turned out not to be. They operated it a couple of days a week. And it was really just an intervention and a chance to interact with those folks and try to get them into services. It never tried to become a job for people. And so I think we all thought it was going to be jobs for people who, so they could change their lives. And that just was not the model. So that could be revised, revised. I think the social security program of getting that, I think that still exists in Spokane, but it could be more robust and they've made an ARPA request, I think, for more funding for that. So just wanted to chime in on those.
Great. We're running out of time and what I'd, what I'd like to do is revisit this, come up with some action items, send them all out to you and then you can add to them as things come up. And we can just share these back and forth, trying not to be a, a quorum. I'll have Jacobi send them out and then you can add things to them as you think of them. And then, go ahead, Mr. Bingo.
I guess I would just say I, I can send an email out to everybody. I'm still learning, you know, how we can communicate through email and all that. But if this is something that we are interested in, you know, I'd, I'd happily lead like a monthly discussion on these are the, these are the action items that, you know, our office has done. We've been joined by these people. This is sort of the update. What, what are the next steps that we as a council would like to do and move that forward? So I, I am quite serious about that. If somebody, you know, if anybody has options, feel free to shoot me an email or something like that.
And go ahead, Councilmember Wilkerson and then Stratton.
I was just going to say to anyone who's listening today out there, whether it be faith-based or some nonprofit or just an individual, if you want to play a part, then reach out to Councilmember Bingo, who has graciously put himself out there. Because I think it's an opportunity for us to invite people in today to really have a say and contribute what they contribute to this discussion.
Councilmember Stratton, did you want to?
I just wanted to add that I know, and I agree with, with Councilmember Wilkerson that, you know, there are organizations and agencies that can do this work. We shouldn't be in the weeds doing this work. But I was just thinking, if each one of us took one nonprofit to just go talk to, to see, you know, what contribution they might be able to make, that could kind of get us a group of folks that could work together to, to kind of move it forward. So I think I'm going to think of a couple that, that I can talk to just to say, what can you add to a discussion and would you be willing to sit down, maybe one meeting and, and talk about how what you do would fit in with what we're trying to do? So if anybody else is inspired, find a nonprofit to talk to and see where they can fit in.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay. This has been quite a lively discussion and I think really informative. Really appreciate all this input because as we're going out in the community, talking to our neighborhoods and our business community, they are frustrated. And I think that if we can show that we are involved and engaged, it would go a long way. And we have some things we can do moving forward. So appreciate all of your input. And our next meeting will not be Monday. We get a holiday. So our next meeting will be next Thursday. Am I correct, Council President? Next Thursday is study session. So we will see you all then. Thank you all very much. Have a great weekend.